It is 7:08 PM, June 11th, 2020. In the Mildenhell Day Library, 600 Limerick Road. This is the Rundle Planning Board meeting. I'm going to start with a roll call on that side of the room.
Jens Bergen.
James Lowry.
Rich Genong.
Tom McGinn.
Tab Redwood.
And right now, we have Roger Maran joining us from the room. And hopefully, the other two will join up shortly, and we'll let them know that they're here.
That's you on mute.
I'm on mute?
You're on mute.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know I am. But I should be picking up on the other laptop.
Can you hear him?
You shouldn't see it, but we're getting better.
Hey Roger, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you well.
We can't hear him.
Speak up, Roger.
Yeah, I did. I can hear you well.
Hang on, let me... Did you enable in audio?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, they're set up.
Roger, can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear you very well, clear and clear.
You can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you.
See what happens when Susan joins, because...
She coming in, man?
No, no. I increased the volume.
Susan, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Oh, here we go. All right.
Hi.
Susan's in.
I'm here.
Want to hear them? This speaker?
Hey Roger. Hi Susan.
You may have to yell, Roger.
Okay.
Okay. We just started. Yeah. I'm gonna try muting this one. Yeah, right here.
Is that easier than this? Whatever the min max buttons are.
Okay, well, I have this one muted. Okay. Moving on. We have approval of the agenda, which includes approval of the minutes. That's the problem. I can't mute. They won't hear me.
It gets better, Rich, when you turn that...
Yeah, I turned this one off. Hey Susan, can you hear us?
Yeah, perfectly.
Okay. Roger, you can hear us?
Yes.
Okay. So we have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for May 28th, 2020. We have public comment. This is for those of you that have questions to the planning board about something that is not on the agenda, that you would like us to address, or if you don't understand something and you need explanation. We have three public hearings. We have a public hearing on the land use ordinance amendments. We have a public hearing on Rundle Children's Garden, a major conditional use application. We have a public hearing on Weir's Buick GMC Service Expansion. This says plenary site application, but this has already been determined complete. That's okay. I'm just telling you what it says. Then we have pending applications for the land use ordinance. Rundle Children's Garden, Weir's Buick GMC Service, all of which will require votes by the planning board. Then we'll be looking at 35 DMR Drive, Plenary Site Plan Review, and Raymond Acres, a subdivision and shoreland zone application. Under new applications, we have Monique and Paul Robitaille, a subdivision pre-application. And we have the Wellness Center, a plenary site plan review determination of completeness. Then we will be discussing a couple of land use ordinance amendments, a proposal to reduce the rear setback requirements for movable structures of less than 100 square feet in all residential districts. And we will... A proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. And we will have any other business that the town planner may have, whether the board wants to bring up. Need a motion on the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Now, according to the town manager, because we're doing Zoom, we need to have a roll call vote.
On every?
On every item. We need to be able to record the roll call so that for future reference, they'll all know that we agreed. We didn't just steamroll over it.
Yeah, Jan says aye.
Jamie?
Jamie, aye.
I'm aye.
I'm aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of May 28th. The minutes are incomplete, so we will table those to a future date. Moving on to the public comment. Does anybody from the public have a comment they would like to make for the planning board? Yes, ma'am?
I didn't bring this up again. The details and stuff. Last agenda, you put a link with all the information. It was very easy to get to. I don't know if it's just because this meeting was... But there was no link. I didn't see one anyway. The land use ordinance revision, the open meeting tonight, I mean, the meeting that we're having tonight, there was no link to that, and you said to go to the website to get it, and it was not easy to find. A little tiny thing on the right-hand side like that.
It's gonna be...
But it could also have a link in the agenda so that we can just click on it and not have to go search for it. It shouldn't be that difficult to get it. And you talked about this. And like I said, last agenda, you did it. It was easy to find. It was right there. I don't know why we went out to not do it as a one meeting.
It was unintentional, allowing me to assume. One of the things... We did not put the Zoom meeting out there because we didn't know if we'd be allowed to have the Zoom meeting. So for... I let the planning board members know that we were having it, but we didn't advertise it to the public because we didn't know.
Yeah.
I didn't find out until this afternoon.
Detail on the agenda.
I do.
Last meeting agenda, you had links that were all the details. Application, everything. They had everything on there last time. Just tell me another.
Rich, would you also note that the date on today's agenda, it should be the 11th, but it says the 10th?
No, mine says June 11th.
Really? That's so weird. Okay.
There must be a gremlin in the machine.
Maybe?
For those of you that could not hear, Susan was commenting that her agenda says June 10th instead of June 11th. I'll try, see if I can move that up a little bit and get a little bit better. Okay. Public hearings. Land Use Ordinance Amendment. I'm going to call the public hearings to order at 7:17. Land Use Ordinance Amendment, a deletion of Land Use Ordinance Section 1.8.3.2.1(c) and 1821d1. Citizen petition for amendment of the land use ordinance. We have this because we had a conversation with the town attorney, and the town attorney said it does not belong in the land use ordinance. It should be taken out in its entirety and allow the selectmen to do something, either with the charter or create a standalone. But she was telling us, it does not belong in the land use ordinance. In the land use ordinance...
When you say "it" doesn't belong, what is "it"?
The citizen petition section in the land use ordinance does not belong in the land use ordinance. The town attorney said we should take that out. So we're going to take it out. Hopefully, the selectmen will follow through with the charter, or they'll create their own. And even if they don't, the state statute still allows citizens to petition for any change to any ordinance. So we're just following what our attorney said, which is why it is here. Yes, Linda?
So we're looking to take it out before we have the charter changed. So where does that leave the citizens who are looking to possibly need to change something as far as the land use ordinance?
The same place they've always been. They can still go through the process of creating a petition because the state law allows you to collect signatures on a petition. The standards were the same. The town attorney said it doesn't belong in the land use ordinance.
So this will change nothing?
It will change nothing.
There's three times.
Three times, okay.
What was especially egregious was the fact that we were charging, but we should... And the planning board doesn't have that authority to hear that. So that was a liability. We're liable to town. The town wanted to do that. They can do it through a charter amendment. But for us to do it the way it is right now is...
But the way that I had read it previously, the way I'm reading it now, is before the citizens signed a petition, they went through the whole thing, and then they went to the town manager, and then they went to... And that was it. Now it sounds like they do the same process, but then they have to go to the planning board.
Nope. You would come to the planning board for a public hearing.
The selectmen send it here.
Right.
The town clerk shall notify the board, selectmen and planning board of the proposed amendments for consideration. At the next town meeting, the planning board shall... Here we go. Are the particular requirements for this?
Which would be the public hearing.
Okay. Let's...
Does anyone else have any comments or questions related to this section of the ordinance? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item. Rundle Children's Garden, a major conditional use application. Proposal to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking and an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel, tax map 39, lot 15, located at 34 Rundle Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Rundle Grange LLC is the owner applicant, and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates is the applicant's agent. And Mr. Metcalf is kind enough to join us in the back of the room. Yeah.
That's some of these Zoom meetings. We have to kind of have that to order. So, again, Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates.
I'm Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates. From your London Grange LLC. As you indicated, this is an application for a conditional use to allow the use of the daycare within the range. That's where the Kenbunk Port point is in, and it's too flat. There are no proposed major improvements to this. It will be a daycare by students with four staff. There's an existing four-unit apartment building in that, which was formerly the dormitory for the Hartland College of Art. The only plan, the visions that we're showing on here really is the detailed information for the required parking. Required parking spaces, providing 19. The subsequent disposal system will serve the range from originally designed in 2000. It was an update to serve a prior daycare use in The Grange at 65 students and 16 staff. So the system is more than adequate for the 25 students and four staff that are keeping this daycare. Again, and when we showed on the sidewalk of the last meeting, we're just showing delineation, striking in the parking, handicap access to existing ramps that are left into the range. And delineating the parking back where the dumpster is currently located is the same location. Other than that, there are no proposed added improvements. We discussed this with the board in terms of some of the waivers that were requested. And one condition I know was in regards to the fire suppression system, which is rated, I believe, the waiting operation. And I have mentioned we've applied to the fire chief as the board requested as a condition. Please strike forward.
I just said one... You said 25 students? 24. Okay. This says 34 on the... I don't know. On number five. We can discuss that later.
Oh, yeah, we can adjust that. Yes. Does the public have any questions to the applicant? Hearing none, I will close that hearing at 7:25, and we will move on to Weir's Buick GMC Service Expansion. A proposal to construct a 2,941-square-foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom. amend the current parking layout and relocate sight lighting from existing vehicle sales and service facility located at 1513 Walton Road, tax map 33, lot 2, in the DB1 and DB3 districts. Weir's Motor Sales Incorporated is the owner and the applicant. I assume that means you, Ms. Linda?
Yes. I'll have to go to a funeral, so I'm on my own. And I got nothing. So, does anybody have any questions? Okay. What?
Only kidding.
Oh. I was gonna say, we're just taking the lights and moving them to the side of the building. It's that one, I think. Why I didn't have a... Because I... I assumed it was gonna be a Zoom meeting. I didn't find out about this before, so, anyway.
Okay, if there are no questions for the applicant, I will close that public hearing at 7:27, and we will move on. Item number one, the land use ordinance amendment, the deletion of the land use ordinance Section 18321(c) and 1821d1, the citizen's petition. Does the board have any questions?
I'll move that we close this and we'll move on to the selectmen.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to move this to the selectmen for inclusion on the town warrant.
Second?
Oh, no, I already got one.
Oh.
No discussion? All those in favor, start with Jens?
Jens Bergen, aye.
Genong, aye.
Again, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Roger, aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll forward this to the selectmen, and they can do whatever it is that the selectmen do with it, other than include it on the warrant. Okay, item number two, Rundle Children's Garden. Proposal to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking and an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel, tax map 39, lot 15, located at 34 Rundle Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Rundle Grange LLC is the owner applicant, and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates is the applicant's agent. Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Yeah, I'm good with it. Okay.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion. Motion seconded? Jens? Jamie? Jamie seconded it? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Genong, aye. And I heard in the background, Roger and Susan both aye.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Findings of fact and motion for approval. Whereas on May 14th, 2020, the Rundle Planning Board received a major conditional use application from Rundle Grange LLC to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking and an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel located at 34 Rundle Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Whereas on May 28th, 2020, the Rundle Planning Board conducted a public sidewalk of the project. Whereas on May 28th, 2020, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing. Whereas on June 11th, 2020, the planning board conducted a public hearing complying with Land Use Ordinance Section 10633. And whereas the Rundle Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact. Findings of fact, number one. The owner of the property and applicant is Rundle Grange LLC. The property is located at 34 Rundle Road, tax map 39, lot 15, in the Townhouse Corner District. The property is on 2.53 acres in size. The property currently contains two existing structures, one being the 2,460-square-foot Grange Building, formerly operating as the Kenbunk Port Bicycle Shop, and the second building serving as a four-unit apartment complex. The site is served by a large 24-car parking lot accessed by an I-brow driveway with two entrances onto Rundle Road. Number five, the applicant proposes to convert the former retail shop on the first floor into a child daycare center serving 24 children and supporting a staff of four caregivers. The upper story of the daycare building will continue to operate as a large, single-family apartment. The proposed use of a childcare center is permitted condition use in the Townhouse Corner District. Number seven, onsite utilities include existing telephone, cable, and electric service. Water is supplied by a service connection from a water main on Rundle Road located by Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port Wells Water District. The building is also serviced by a separate, large septic system installed in 2005 and designed with capacity of 1,215 gallons per day. The occupant load is the proposed daycare center, and the second story of properties projected to be 690 gallons per day. Number eight, the existing parking lot, when restriped in accordance with the site plan, will provide two handicap parking spaces, with one situated to provide ADA access to the daycare via a ramp, 10 parking spaces dedicated to the rear apartment building and the second story unit, and eight spaces dedicated to the daycare center with three surplus spaces for expansion. Number nine, the eyebrow entrance will be dedicated for child drop-off and pickup in a counterclockwise motion with a queue capacity of seven vehicles. Site distances both to the east and west on the Rundle Road meet the land use ordinance standards. Since the applicant is proposing no physical expansions of the property, the planning board has waived the requirement for a stormwater management plan. Number 10, parking lot lighting is currently in place, and no changes to the exterior lighting are proposed at this time. Number 11, the planning board has determined that the existing vegetated buffers to the west are sufficient to meet and exceed the buffering requirements of Land Use Ordinance Section 5952. Number 12, the Rundle Deputy Chief has submitted a letter to the planning board that the project is within 500 feet of a pressurized hydrant and is in compliance with Section 57 of the Rundle Land Use Ordinance. Number 13, the applicant has shown adequate evidence of right title and interest in the property. Informants with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Rundle Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 929 of the Rundle Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9291, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The uses and sizes of the structures are similar in scale and scope to surrounding properties and other land uses in the TC District. Motion has been made and seconded to approve 9291. Is there any discussion?
Just a question.
That's what the town manager has indicated.
Okay.
Okay, so 9291. Genong, aye. Susan?
Roger, aye.
Aye.
Okay. 9292, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan encourages mixed uses in the Townhouse Corner District. Therefore, the proposed use is in conformance with the 2016 comprehensive plan.
We'll go approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Genong, aye.
Again, aye.
Lauren, aye.
Roth, aye.
Motion is unanimous. 9293, that there is adequate safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site will accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing operation will not generate a significant increase in trip generation. The applicant's driveway site distance exceeds the minimum standards of Section 521.1, and the applicant's queue strategy will substantially eliminate vehicle queuing onto Rundle Road. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Genong, aye.
Again, aye.
Roth, aye.
Got them both. 9294, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Existing onsite septic will exceed the proposed septic load, and onsite and water is provided to the site by Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port Wells Water District. The proposed use will not increase the demands for water or septic flow on the property.
We'll go approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Genong, aye.
Roth, aye.
Lauren, aye.
It is unanimous. 9295, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that would adversely affect neighboring properties in that the nature of the business does not generate noise from outdoor children playing, but is sufficient to remove from neighboring properties. This is a residential neighborhood. It would sound like children playing is standard. Odor. This use will not generate any odor issues. Vibration and smoke. No vibration or smoke issues are generated on-site. Blair, the applicant is not proposing to add any additional lighting on-site.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Marvin made the motion. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Roth, aye.
Genong, aye.
Again, aye.
It is unanimous. Yep, it's unanimous. 9297, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The applicant has provided adequate documentation that no nuisances will be generated by the operation of the daycare center.
We'll go approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Genong, aye.
Lauren, aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous. 9298, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent and applicable standards of the Rundle Land Use Ordinance. Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Genong, aye.
Again, aye.
Lauren, aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous. I sent them a new link. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Rundle Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of Rundle Grange LLC to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking on a 2.53-acre parcel located at 34 Rundle Road in the Townhouse Corner District, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall seek a certificate of occupancy from the code enforcement office... Number one, the applicant shall seek a certificate of occupancy from the code enforcement officer prior to the operation of the new use. Number two, parking lot striping shall be completed prior to the opening of the facility. Number three, the applicant shall receive a sign permit, shall receive a sign permit. From the CEO prior to operation. Number four, alterations of the existing outdoor lighting system shall be approved by the town planner and code enforcement officer. I believe there was. Wasn't there something about getting the license application to the state of Maine? Okay. So number five, the applicant. Needs to receive her permit from the state of Maine. Health and Human Services before she begins operation. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this eleventh day of June, two thousand twenty. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Roger made the motion, Susan seconded it. All those in favor?
Bergen, hi.
Hi.
Gnon, hi.
Warren, hi.
Roth, hi.
Yep. It is unanimous. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda. Good luck. I was gonna say the only odor that's gonna be out there is from little kids. Item number three. Weir's Buick GMC Service Expansion Plenary Site Plan Determination and Completeness, a proposal to construct. A two thousand nine hundred and forty-one square foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom. Amend the current parking lot layout and relocate site lighting for existing vehicle sales and service facility. Located at fifteen thirteen Fulton Road, tax map thirty-three lot two in the DB one and DB two districts. Weir's Motors Sales Incorporated is the owner of the case. Does the board have any questions for? Ms. Linda? Anybody? Yes? Okay, so we should do that first before we read the findings of fact. Accept this and approve it? Does it require us to do anything? Oh, okay. I was surprised at how much it was gonna cost. Did you? Okay. We will, we will move on. Findings of fact and approval for, motion for approval for Weir's GMC Buick Service Expansion. Whereas on March twelfth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan pre-application from Weir's Buick GMC Service. To construct a two thousand nine hundred and five square foot. Expansion on the north side of the existing showroom. Amend the current parking lot and install site lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility. Located at fifteen thirteen Fulton Road, tax map thirty-three lot two in the DB one and DB two districts. Whereas on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a site plan of the property. And advised the applicant as to the additional submissions that would be required in a plenary site application. Whereas on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board. Received a full plenary site plan application and after review determined the applicant to be complete. A public hearing was then scheduled for June eleventh, two thousand twenty. Whereas on June eleventh, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with sections ten, six, three, three. Of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact. Findings of fact, number one, the owner and applicants are Weir's Motors Sales Incorporated. Number two, the property is located at fifteen thirteen Fulton Road. Tax map thirty-three lot two in DB one and DB two districts. Number three, applicants have provided adequate evidence of right title and interest. Number four, the site consists of twenty-five point two seven acres. And consists of an existing showroom and attached service facility and car wash and collision center. Along with vehicle displaying customer and employee parking areas. Number five, the applicant proposes to construct a two thousand nine hundred and square foot. Service facility expansion on the north side of the existing service facility. Rearrange parking, install drip edge drainage facilities for the roof runoff and install additional ID. Number six, the site is currently paved and no increase in purview surface will be created. Number seven, the proposed facility is currently serviced by onsite septic. Site utilities and public water provided by KKWW Water District. Number eight, the applicant proposes to install a drip line storage trench. At the eve of the proposed expansion and discharge the treated and detained runoff. Directly into a small wetland located on the east side of the existing parking lot. Number nine, the applicant has received a letter of compliance from the Arundel Fire Chief. Number ten, the applicant has submitted an application to the main DEP for a minor revision to an existing site location development permit. And is awaiting a notice of decision. That was number ten. Number eleven, the applicant has provided the fifteen parking spaces for employees and customers as required in the land use ordinance section five, twelve, three, five. Number twelve, the Planning Board has determined that existing landscape and buffering facilities meet the screening standards of land use ordinance section five, nine, five. Number thirteen, the applicant is proposing to install luminaire type. Double E LED shielded wall mounted lights over the big doors. Otometric mapping confirms the resulting lighting will be in conformance with lighting standards in land use ordinance section five, ten. Number fourteen, the applicant has provided an adequate plan for sediment and erosion control. Number fifteen, the applicant has submitted a cost estimate from RAVI excavation in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Number sixteen, documentation of proposed improvements is contained within a site plan set titled Site Plan for Weir's Motors. Dated May fourth, two thousand twenty. And prepared by Paul Gadboyd PE Architectural Plans and Elevations for Weir's Buick GMC, prepared by Graham Architects and dated April second, two thousand twenty. And a site plan packet prepared by Paul Gadboyd PE. Informance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section ten, six, four. Of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Number one, the proposed project informs all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance.
So moved.
We don't have to vote on this one? Yeah, good. Number two, the proposed project has submitted applications to the main DEP for a minor revision to the existing site. Location permit and is awaiting DEP response. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection. And will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel. In the provision of emergency services and law enforcement for the project site and the neighborhood. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Number five, the proposed project provides adequate stormwater management facilities. To produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event. And will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems. Within the community or neighborhood. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, habitats. Marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environment, or the community. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances. That will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Number nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal governance. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the Plenary Site Plan Application of Weir's. Buick GMC Service to construct a two thousand nine hundred and five square foot. Expansion on the north side of the existing showroom. Amend the current parking lot and install site lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility located at fifteen thirteen Fulton Road. Tax map thirty-three lot two in the DB one and DB two districts. Subject to the following conditions. This approval is subject to the issuance of a revised and updated main DEP site location permit. No work shall be performed until these permits have been supplied to the town planner. Number two, the applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars plus ten percent contingency. In compliance with land use ordinance section ten, point seven, prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number three, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of site work. And no site work shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil stabilization mechanisms prescribed herein are made effective. Number four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit to the town planner. Something? Strike that one, never mind. So number four will actually be no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until a code enforcement officer receives. Certification from the design engineer that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this eleventh day of June, two thousand twenty. Now I need a motion.
So moved?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Gnon, hi. There you go. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for putting up. Do I need to send something to Marty? I will try him one more time. We're gonna take a five minute break while I see if I can get the other planning board member in here. And I need some air.
You guys?
I want it to be, I have all of my notes and everything on the computer, so I could read them. I can't read them without broadcasting them up on the board. Because it's plugged in through here. Well, that's, that's what I do when I'm at home. Is, I just call everything. I don't even split it. Cause you can't see it. I just sent him a new link, all he has to just click on.
Wait, you don't wanna be in office, you wanna be, you wanna be in your browser. If you're in Microsoft, you don't wanna be in.
Oh, there's any number of them. It's Chrome, there's Explorer, there's Firefox, there's all kinds of. How does he get, is he? He shouldn't have to be in there. All he should have to do is.
Yeah, he should only have to pop it to click the link.
Yeah.
Work with all the browsers.
All, all he has to do is look at the email that I sent him and click the link. Yeah, click the link. It should, if he needs to do anything with Zoom, he should be, it should take care of it for him. Did you just come back in, Amy?
Me, yeah.
Okay. Cause I looked a minute ago and you weren't there, but I didn't see you come back across and then all of a sudden you were there. Yeah. She turned sideways and disappeared. That's the problem. Yeah, at this point, there isn't much we can do. Okay, nope, we're, we're back on the record. Thirty-five DMR Drive, Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness. A proposal to construct a four thousand two hundred and fifty-one square foot metal building. Complementing an existing three thousand four hundred and forty square foot commercial building. On a two point eight three acre park site located at thirty-five DMR tax map, one lot warranty in the B Y district. Gary Martin is the owner and applicant, the name of it now, yes, who is the applicant's agent. So. You have. Yeah, you can.
The board wanted to know if they had a spot for the plan of the encroachment, is that what I understood?
That is correct. What is, what is the plan that you have currently?
Sure, so last meeting we kind of put two options, one would be access up through one, or the other would be deeding the encroachment and deed to the board. So, in the meantime, I did explore the option with DOT to enter effort one. Effort was denied, there's three hundred and fifty feet needed for an entrance separation, so that was denied, so. He has, he is amenable to deeding the encroachment area to the butter, so I have drafted a deed to that effect. Using the plan, and I have that for the board if they like it, but that would be the plan and not, you know, we'd be amenable to making that a condition of approval.
Is there, who's responsible for maintaining the road?
My understanding is that Mr. Martin and Mr. Cole have just always, you know, co-op, co-cooperative in doing, so those are the two that use it. So it's been a good arrangement so far. It's pretty amicable, and I think Mr. Martin would like to keep it that way.
They've both been there a long time.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. There haven't been any issues, and obviously this is the first time it's come up, it's been encroaching on his property for some time. He hasn't. Never been an issue.
So what effect will this have? You're gonna transfer the right of way. To whom?
The, the encroch, the area of the encroachment, so it's really just looking at the plan, that small present piece would go to the butter who owns the land under the easement. So in the event there were ever to be a standalone easement in the future, it would be one owner, was my understanding would be the board's preference for last time he spoke. And as opposed to taking it from multiple owners, so. That was the discussion I understood from last meeting. My client, obviously he explored the alternative, he was unable to do that, he has taken on the other option that he was given by the board.
Will that affect? Anybody else's frontage?
It would not, it's just going to expand the easement to the butter's air, land into my client's. Property completely, yeah, it won't, no one's, everyone has the same access that would otherwise have.
But they have the same access, but will they have the same, same amount of frontage on the road?
It's not, it's not on Route one, it's, it's only my client's. Boundary on DMR Drive that's affected, so this is Route one here. Rather small, but the only piece that's being deeded out would be on the boundary of DMR Drive. would be on the boundary of D M R Drive in the northeast of the valley of my client's property, that's.
But it wa, it won't affect, he'll still meet the requirements for the frontage.
Oh, yes, that's correct, the setback was adjusted for the building and everything to accommodate that.
Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure of, is that it, he'll have the proper amount of, of frontage on, on D M R Drive, and everybody else will have the proper amount of frontage. Is this, I'm just curious, is Atlantic Storage going to have anything to do with this?
I'm not sure, I guess smart.
Oh, I'm sorry, smart transportation. Are they going to have access to the road, are they going to be doing anything with it?
I, I don't think they, I don't think they use it for access, they just own the land under it. It's only Cole and Mr. Martin, from what I understand, actually need the access, the storage has their own entrance off of the lot.
Okay, yep, yeah, it does.
Question, what about Stoughton?
They have access on Old Post Road from the Landers.
They closed that down.
In any event, I don't think this would change the access, because the only thing he is doing is giving property to the property owner of the easement, so that the actual easement itself is unchanged. The access, the easement is a right to use that land. My client would need to have the authority to do that, because he has an own property under the.
Mr. Smart is okay with this?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
My client is okay, it's amenable to this, certainly.
I think it's.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure it doesn't create any other issue.
No.
And that, that was the whole thing about the, the frontage and, and whether or not.
He's been.
It's not affecting anyone.
Yeah. The encroachment is totally onto Martin's lot.
Yep.
Wouldn't there be any expansion potential? The issues we've got.
Yeah, we do.
That could, that future development.
Development potential, perhaps?
There is, there's one, there's one lot that is standalone lot that is not being developed, Cole owns it right now, he's expressed an interest in building that, but I'm not sure if that's, that is, I guess. The claim would have to take, because one step, they're fine. Because what we have is we've got a situation where we don't have acres.
Right. Like a pack of one, but not.
We don't have any.
Yeah.
It's sort of like.
But that's how we ended up in this position, because prior planning boards just kicked the can down the road, somebody else will deal with it.
I think what happened is, I want to tell Mr. Martin, you see, there was a driver who was last week, this whole part of, and he was not really pre-issued, let's work, old post road to Route 1, and I'm not sure what happened, if it happened to the easement, because no road, roads got created right off the, that separate, which is required for a road.
Now, but wasn't one was created.
You know, the history gets married fuzzies around this, I don't know how that happened, that's what happened. So, we don't have any.
And then the maintenance agreement kind of troubles me because if the two principals get into an argument with each other, who's going to fix the road?
Oh, that'll be, oh, well, again, and this, this is a private cause of action, they have two, between the two of them, to compel that.
If they, if Mr. Cole develops that piece of land in the back, they're going to have to come up with a written maintenance agreement, that includes everybody on the road.
And then I can imagine that he would be in that, doing so, I mean, my client certainly will, he, he has wanted to take half of these positions, but he's not upsetting the owners, that's his motivation right now. He can't control what they're willing to do, but I think if she was on the other foot, he would certainly come to the table, I mean, it would be essentially memorializing what they've done historically, so I don't think it would be a giant issue down the road if that were to come. That's from my understanding of the dynamics.
And, and, and if, if he decides not to, he sells, then they're going to have to sit down with everyone on that road and hammer up.
That might be an inevitability, I mean, that might be a reality, or, you know, it's either go one of two ways, it's either be very, you know, consecutive, and then I can just kind of peander on by agreement.
Well, for my purpose, I guess we'll just kick that can down the road to the next time it shows up, but at some point, we're going to have to, we're going to have to face the issue and say, what, what's going to happen in terms of, what are we going to do with this road that is illegal right now?
It's not the fourth.
Well, not going to worry, okay.
So if the board were to do that, then the next action would be, we'll accept the deny that option, we can move over to review of the plan, I could do the storm work, so we can do that. And you're going to submit, I would suggest the applicant will submit, he's already got the deed description.
Correct, you're essentially using the plan, it's not meeting bounds and.
But you'll, you'll, but you'll submit a new plan that shows us the new lot, right?
Sure.
And with setbacks, correct, this whole line will go here. Oh, one thing you do need to, have you touched a worksheet?
Yes, I have, I sent you a letter, I have a copy, I need it.
Okay. So I think that's an exposed question. I'll make a motion that we accept the option.
Which I believe is option number two, the proposed easement solution acknowledging the D M R drive as a non-conforming private way that serves more as a commercial driveway.
The applicant should give the encroachment area representative of the original proposal a case of law, by which it's justified, which is why, that, one.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're up on the.
To the D M R.
Okay.
That's the option.
Okay.
We have a second, I'm sorry.
A second. We have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's proposed solution. Any discussion or any more?
Why did we, why did we reject it on the 23rd?
I think we were waiting, Roger, to see whether or not they could have an access to the property through Route 1.
Right.
Yep. Is that right?
Yes.
And because they don't have enough frontage.
Yeah, that's what I remember that, no, okay.
They can't have the access, so that eliminated that option.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Gnon, aye.
Again, aye.
More aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous. Now, the next issue will be to get all of the plans and the letter from the chief and all of the other.
Good.
Oh, okay.
Just this one, peer review and an updated plan is all.
Yep. And once we have that, we'll be able to schedule a public hearing and proceed down route.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away.
I have.
Item number five, Raymondator Subdivision Amendment and Shoreland Zone Application, a proposed amendment to alter the approved property line between lots 503 and 503A on Tax Map 30, as well as a reduction in the 75-foot shoreland stream protection setback from Goth Millbrook Tributary on Tax Map 30, Lot 503A off of Black Dog Road in the R2 and S P districts. Nicholas Raymond is the owner applicant, the name is McNally, is the applicant's agent. You're up again.
Good evening. Well, again, we just had that site walk this evening, the board members of the board were able to see the site. In last week, we did submit an updated narrative for the board's consideration after last meeting, raise a couple of issues, first, just wanting to confirm that this impacted the correct body to hear this request, we outlined that there, under Rondo's ordinance, we do believe that it doesn't explicitly say, I think you should go to the Z B A, we believe that the board does have the authority under, under chapter eight, so we outlined that in that letter, I'm happy to take questions on it, but essentially under the section, this board does have the authority to make special exceptions to reduce of encroachment to a buffer of less than 75 feet, in this case, it would be a reduction of about 19 feet, so still more than the 25 feet minimum. And we believe that in the section of the round point, that allows for that in special or unique circumstances, we highlighted, but that special or unique circumstances is not necessarily defined in the ordinance, and when specific terms are defined, essentially you kind of apply the common definition of that, using common sense, using some context, and we believe that the situation that we've outlined for the board, the historical context, the physical context, the situation at the site that some of you have viewed, would most certainly consider this special or unique. So we do believe that that's, it's the scenario, and that the board does have the authority to reduce that back, and should do so under the circumstance. There's a couple of things that were raised at the site walk that I wanted to address is that, I think there was a board member who had enshrined whether there's a legal remedy against the contractor, right, in this context, there was a contractor who had, essentially made the mistake, which resulted in where Mr. Raymond is right now, so obviously outside of his control, it's not necessarily his responsibility, whole set of unsupposed incentives that like him where he is. And so, the legal remedy, the question, the answer is potentially there's recourse, but through the court system, and that process, the delay could be years, particularly given the backlogging courts in the midst of the COVID-19 crisis. So Mr. Raymond's in the middle of his financing, and so that is just an impractical remedy for him right now, it could be a viable one, maybe years down the road, which is impractical at this moment. So I did want to address that, that yes, it could be legal recourse, however, the timing of which is, is really problematic in this circumstance. The other concern that I heard from board members is that this might open up some sort of floodgates for, you know, the, an opportunity for someone to build outside the envelope and then come and ask permissions from the board afterwards. And I just think that, that the board has to consider that you are the fact-finder, you are the gatekeeper here of what circumstances fall under special exceptions or special or unique circumstances. And so, just because you analyze a circumstance under a certain set of facts and a certain set of historical contexts and find that this situation is special or unique, doesn't mean the next time someone builds outside of the envelope is going to fit that same scenario. So, I really think that the board should pause and position themselves as a fact-finder to really look at the detailed facts of the circumstance and decide whether it's special or unique before dismissing it outright by saying, we do it this one time, you have to do it the next time, which isn't necessarily true. You're a fact-finding body that will address these circumstances as they arise. And so, again, we, we think that given all of the circumstances, the historical context, the situation that gave rise to the issue that we have, the classroom head inhibitors and the environmental impact of actually physically moving this building, this house that is well under construction, really run contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, particularly from an environmental standpoint. So, I did want to address those two issues in addition to the narrative letter that we did provide to the board, and again, the applicant's here, and Mr. Joe was here, who has created this, the landscape plan that, again, adds to the remedial litigation efforts to minimize the environmental impact of the current encroachment, and obviously obviate the need for any further disruption of the buffer. So, we're here to open for questions, if the board has any or for discussion.
Does the board have any questions? Take it away.
Sure. Do you have an understanding of what led to the misvolition?
Yes, we do, in.
Yeah, so, what happened, we had set the, we had this plan, we had set the stakes up in the boundary lines, where the river setback was, and then a sideline setback. And, so what happened, they ended up eating the树木 trees, and they had fallen on the stakes, and we, they re-put it in, thinking they were correct, but we have no way of proving, you know, how it happened or who did it.
This was the plan. We used the concrete practice to locate the house. You see, the house is almost facing that road perfectly. We measured from telephone pole of 75 feet, we measured from boundary down here, we had a little bit of furthered within the line, and the line. We also have. When we left, and the contractor had a conversation with the excavator, we all left and went to work, and they got the hole. So when the hole's done, the big white trench, all the telephones out, we placed it on both sides of the trench, it was over the other pins, you couldn't see. But what caused those pins to get messed up is, the excavator, when someone decided with a few more trees, it took down, and the dragon excavator, too much fire, it hit, it knocked the pins out, stuck them back where they thought they should go.
And they also used the boundary pin here.
And they used the boundary pin, or instead of the foundation one, so diagonally shifted the house. So, if you look at how it sat on that lot in reference to the bonded road, that's how it should be, if you turn it, that's what they ended up doing with the pins. The house was about 50% on where the foundation was, but when they turned it, it kicked this corner too close to the string, it kicked that corner over the other one.
Let's see, okay. Anyone else want to? You guys already.
Went into it last week.
I don't know whether you saw that, actual overlay.
Yeah.
This is where the house is, the tank, and that's what it had to be turned, if it didn't be in the line. As I, as I've noticed, they've claimed and submitted to the contractor.
It has not, and that's, that's something that the applicant has, have not.
We were just worried that if you do that, they're going to go to the insurance company, they're going to go to their lawyer, and they're going to contest who said what and did what, and it ends up faulty.
No, I don't know. Certainly shouldn't be insurance coverage in place for the excavator and contract there.
I generally don't see insurance companies just sit down, so I know you're on right track. We had a strong damage in December, and we still have a good pay.
They sent down three different people.
Three different adjusters come down, and you know, all of a sudden it's gone. This, this project Nick's been trying to do for about two years, and he's obtained financing from Norway, and it expired, they had to redo it, it expired. They redid it a third time, and now they're done a fourth time, it's about to expire. We're concerned that knowing some people that were certainly credit where they've gone to that same bank and other banks to get loans, banks are kind of putting the brakes on a little bit, so let's see what this COVID thing puts on. We're worried about, too much time passes, he's going to lose his financial, and if we're tied up for it for two years, I don't know what's going to happen.
Financing, obviously, would be required to move the building in the end.
Right.
If, if that was the remedy that was decided upon, financing would be too much, it's complicated, so there would be financing required to do that for our settlement. And so, I think that that's where that, all of those issues kind of come to a head, goes to Raymond, where that's why he's, that's why he's making this request, and that's why it is, it is very unique, and it's very unfortunate, that's where he's. He's not unfamiliar with the board, so he understands that it's not the type of least of business, it's, it's not, you know, it's a serious issue, and, you know, he has, you know, made all the requirements to get where he was.
What's the movement, Jan, they would have, we had the stuff, we had the building moving down, they would have to fill a whole bunch of wetland, cut down a ton of trees to be able to get under the thing and get it moved off enough to destroy that foundation, do the, you would do more damage if it followed it.
The ordinance is impacting what the house is doing.
I can understand why, if you're versed in litigation, anybody, the hell these mindset, I feel that way, but I don't think, I don't think these are mutually exclusive routes. Seems to me that any of them, and those who claim ought to be submitted, you know, ought to be submitted right away to both entities and their insurers. And, you know, nothing comes of that, nothing comes of that. I don't think that would be the case because neither one of these insurers want to have claims out there unresolved. And they can figure that out by themselves. If the homeowner is not to blame in any respect, you know, I think you're going to be far more focused on resolving and moving on. You know, with those issues of subrogation or constitution between themselves. This, this is my thought.
I don't disagree. I just don't know if it solves the issue that we're here for, where the current circumstance that Serena finds himself in where he has a half-built residence and is unable to get financing to move or to complete construction, is unable to get financing to the building. And his hands are tied by, you know, by those claims, it would be a step, but the unknown timeline for that litigation, he has time there too. So I certainly don't disagree with that theory. I think, you know, that's, it's a valid legal point for sure. I guess I just don't know if it's, the remedy there is, as you said, it's different. Be compensated for the loss.
Yes, Susan.
So I agree with Jens that you should file and seek a legal remedy because right now all of the, you know, eggs seem to be in the planning board's basket and whether or not they're going to show mercy on the current situation and allow it to be considered a special exception. So I think in good faith, the builder and the excavator should be put on notice that you're going to seek a legal remedy so that you're going to look everywhere to be made whole. That said, it's not as terrible as it sounds because I feel your pain and believe me, I want to find a way and I may have in my brain for you to be able to keep the house where it is and make the changes that you suggest. But it's not the board's fault that the loan expired, that the house was built in the wrong place, that the builder is a good guy, the excavator is a good guy, you don't have a construction liability policy, it's going to take years, blah, blah, blah. That's really not the board's problem. I mean, bottom line.
And I don't disagree.
But so the only thing I would say is if you argue that the ordinance was not specific enough and that you felt and Tad would have to, you know, agree or disagree or, you know, provide evidence for his point of view that the ordinance should be made much more specific and state that it really only applies to special circumstances as they relate to environmental issues and not to mistakes or building problems that occur on site after the fact. Then perhaps with Tad and the town's agreement and the board's agreement, we could find a way to give you your exception and change the land use ordinance language so that there was never any misunderstanding going forward for anyone else. I mean, that would be my remedy. And it's really Tad's and the rest of the board's interpretation of what the planning board meant and intended, but maybe didn't specifically say in the ordinance about what are the circumstances that allow for a special exception.
So the way to say this, the point of words, two choices, you know, you have to deny it, you know, or to approve it, that's all it becomes. And so it's a difficult situation, but yeah, I, I agree with you Susan, we need this up going forward. But right now, I feel it's in front of us. I think the punishment needs to fit the crime. I think for, I can't imagine why you would intentionally. I see it as a mistake, a long mistake along the way. For, for us to deny would require the litigation, which we can do or not do, it's up to you. We can't tell you to do that. But you still, you know, you still have to pick up the ball and move it to all of the necessary barriers down. And that, for what? To move it to where you want it to be?
Thank you.
I think, um, which is to me, that was part of the punishment, that's way overboard. So I like, to me, that's like, just, it was something that's hard to undo. And, and you still would have been, if you had come to us and said, we would like, we could have made that exception.
From the, from the time board.
And so, so it's still, you know, we can't, twelve feet, right? It's not, you still, I put it back at fifteen.
Fifty, say.
Fifty six feet. So you're still within that, that setting of the arena. So as I'm concerned, I, I think it's something we probably never write out just, just making these assumptions.
I agree with Tom. I think the nature of the encroachment, where it's, where it's essentially the corner of the building is shifted and made a triangular portion, like an acute encroachment, is, is much more, like I said, more palatable to allow the exception that, that's provided in the ordinance to be able to, from a practical standpoint, allow that encroachment. And instead of all of the disruption that would occur, if you made them, you know, dig that out, rip it up and replace that house in a, in the different, in the original location.
Thoughts on it, Roger?
I got along with Tom, was just finishing saying. I have no additional comment.
I, I on the, the other hand, disagree completely. I don't believe that we should do anything. The applicant came to us. We, we didn't even have to look at the shoreline zone because he had space in which to put the house. He had adequate space. The fact that his contractor screwed up means he has a case against his contractor. It does not mean, in my opinion, that we change what that plan was. We put the buffers on the stream ordinance and the shoreline zone specifically to prevent people from going into wetlands area and doing something. I think, when, when you say that the punishment needs to fit the crime, in my opinion, the punishment in this case is you move the house. You put it where you originally said you were going to. I don't believe that it took the contractor one day to put that foundation in there.
Doug the hole in one day.
They.
We were, I mean, it sounded like I went up today to check on what the progress.
That becomes, and I don't want to sound cold and heartless about it, but that becomes your problem. You should have been looking at it to make sure it was done correctly and in the right place. The fact that it became a self-inflicted wound is not, in my opinion, a special exception to, to the ordinance.
Well, in. I wouldn't characterize it as a self-inflicted, like at any point, I think that it wasn't self-inflicted, but it was a third party. In fact, it was a third and fourth party. So, I mean, I think, I think Tom addressed it eloquently and, and I also concur with Susan's comment. It's a, it's a tough thing for us to do, but I think that, you know, I think it seems to me it falls within what is otherwise undefined law and the definitions of this, of, of the ordinance.
Okay.
And prospectively, I think we can be led by Susan's suggestion to look at defining those terms.
Oh, we definitely.
It doesn't have to end somebody else. Having said that though, I don't think insurance carriers ought to get a free ride almost.
No, I'm, I'm in total agreement with you on that, Jens.
And that's very well, that's absolutely something.
See, and that's, that's the other avenue of resolution to this problem.
Well.
It, yes, it's.
It's not. It, it won't solve, I mean, that would just result in money. It doesn't result in a solution to the setback.
If we, I, I would take the, I, I'm not a lawyer. I never even played one on TV. But I would make the argument, if I were the, the builder, I would make the argument in court that it didn't cost me anything. Yeah, I built it in the wrong place, big deal. It didn't cost anything. I don't have to pay any money back to the, to the applicant. I don't have to move the building. I don't have to do anything. So there's no.
But also what about the environmental impact you have in moving it potentially, you know, ninety feet to protect.
It's fifty, it's fifty percent of the building that is in the wrong spot.
No, no, it's about a third of the building that's in the shoreline zone. The other side is not shoreline zone, so that's the sideline.
It's an impact on the land, it's, it's an impact on the land of the home. So I think he does have a damage, but it endures beyond.
And, and that's an argument that, that you would have to make with the judge to, to come up with a ruling. I'm just saying, if I were the contractor, I'd be making the argument that, well, there was no damage. He got his house built and, and he, he didn't have to suffer any consequences.
Right, because they're looking to the planning board for remedy. They're not looking to the contractor for a remedy. They're looking to the planning board to remedy the issue.
On the other hand, as well, we can't set a precedent.
Hang on for a second. Tad's got something.
I, I have, I guess I haven't put it in this. As, as your advisor, I have to tell you a few things.
Tad, can you talk up?
Sure.
Great. I can't hear you.
Okay. Well, I think that, that, that the problem is that we're looking at the, when you, when the planning board did this, and this is an easy way to do this, Tom, but I actually do it for my job. But the, when the planning board decided that they had a, basically a discretionary ability to change the buffer, that discretionary ability that had been discussed, Jamie was part of that discussion, was that it had to be an environmental factor. An environmental factor would lead, as you did with another situation, where you, when you had a reverse slope, that the, the drainage from that site would not have an impact on the wetland, that you wouldn't get into the wetland, then the wetland in order to, in the stream, the integrity of the, of the buffer was maintained. It would just be very unique circumstances, perhaps it would be a situation where I'm an existing, existing house. But that it is not to be used for any other purpose than for environmental purposes. And what's happening here is the unique circumstances that he was talking about, that warrant a special exception in the shoreline zone, includes financial hardship. If financial hardship has never been a part of the shoreline zoning process, that's something the ZB A, they determined that it's not something that's financial hardship. It's not the shoreline. And I think there's something important that we better remember about shoreline zoning. This isn't a local zoning ordinance. This is a state-handed environmental protection ordinance for the purpose of protecting the environment and achieving certain environmental goals that the state has determined for a long time to be a credible nature, goes beyond the town, a lot of the most owned property owners, certainly zoning. The way we think zoning is intended to preserve property values and, and enhance and protect persons' property rights. Shoreline zoning is actually physically for organization. Its intent is to take property rights away in order to benefit a better good for the general public and for greater, greater population. And as such, it's a little different. And what my big question, I think I have to ask is if the legislation, legislative intent of the shoreline zone was to protect the environmental factors and the intent that this board originally had to provide exemptions in which the environmental factors were not compromised, then you have to ask your question, are we, are we bleeding over and treating this as we want a normal subdivision or a normal zoning situation issue? We provide for a situation which, you know, respond themselves into. No fault through his, no fault to him, among. That's, that's, that's really the issue. I mean, you know, we're using a special exception for providing relief for shoreline zone violation as anything but for environmental, or like how the situation rejected, personally by support of the purpose. And it isn't discretionary in a form, but I will, I will tell you this, that what you and I am concerned about is that the area that you're talking about was originally intended to be on the plan, the range of G two hundred, that was supposed to be stripped anyways. That's what the system is going in, that's what the building was for. That area, that showing your G two hundred is where you're going to be developed, which is part of the smashing here, planning what, which is why they gave the current law off. And so I'm not sure I, I really, I can, I can subscribe to the fact it was more environmental impact by going through those trees that are on upwind area than just continuing to have that slope that we got there and the encroachment into the shoreline zone. Remember that the, the one other thing I do want to bring up from the press is, is it's not a good time. We should recognize also that according to right now, that kind of a river watershed study that's ongoing right now. Unfortunately, with this, the water testing is free, that has enough rough is compromised. We have some significant amount of, of physical pollutants, a lot of it is, apparently is, is ecoline that's coming down in the watershed and we are probably going to be, and we'll do something about this in the future. So maintenance of these setbacks that could be critical for not only protecting the watershed, but also probably in the future. The other, I guess the other point that I can't notice again, yes, that what if that weren't nineteen feet clear of that? This equation includes the plan beyond that, the, the deposition of Phil. We're going over discussing how we can stabilize that thing. And therefore, they're concerned about what's going to happen in the future for maintaining that buffer that's going to be so critical in that area between this house and that wetland and that stream, to ensure that the water is filtered properly, you think the state and the town are objective. So that's essentially, I guess I've been reading Mr. Cole Chow, I have to, I have to basically entertain the board of these.
On that point, Tad.
Yes.
So would, um, the requirement of doing some additional planting in the cleared area, would that mitigate some of the issue here?
Well, I think that's, that's where I, yeah, I think you would be required to mitigate it. You and, and the entity, I was reminded this by the shoreline zone officer today, that it doesn't matter, but we're going to have to mitigate. The outfit would have to do it in any case. They move that, they have to mitigate. They have to do it two to one, replace with a bench tension. And we're going to have to mitigate one way or the other. So there is mitigation.
We have a plan to mitigate that.
Yeah, there is. But I, I want to put it before that, that this is, basically what I've already said, that this is as, as difficult as to say, financial hardship is not a root factor, so we should consider.
And I can speak to that. I guess first, the ordinance doesn't specify what can or cannot be included when you're considering a special or unique circumstance. So we put the financial hardship in there as part of the puzzle. It's one of the many pieces when we're looking at the context of what happened here and what would be required to fix it and the environmental impact on it. So it's really just a checklist of what makes the circumstance unique or special. It's not all inclusive. It's not all inclusive of the financial hardship. That's one part of it because it's going to delay fixing the problem if that were to be the solution. So again, it's one of, it's a multi-faceted checklist of what makes it especially unique. In and of itself is not a lone factor. Just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments by anyone? Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? We do still have more to go through. Do we not need something else from them? Because this is supposed to be under the shoreline zone. We need some more.
But the one thing from a procedural standpoint, I think we can't do this under amendment seven. And we're going to have to follow that process, which means we have to have a public hearing to do the site plan process. So we'd like you to quickly put together an application, shoreline zoning application, end of the year. So I haven't wanted to advertise it all. So we need all those obligations and no matter what the decision is, the board, we are a key on the procedure.
So before they go forward and do that, should we take a vote of the board? So that they've got some confidence that they can move that forward?
We can give them a consensus, but I don't think we can take a vote. I think a vote would be binding. And we don't have, we don't have the application. We don't have anything to. Yeah.
Out of in concept, that way, if bad people say no, they're not going to go for it, then it's a waste of their time and effort.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We just voice our opinion.
Right.
So can someone recap what we're voting or trying to bless here, Jamie?
Thank you, Susan.
I mean, I'm not really sure what we're talking about here.
So we won't be taking a full vote now. So what we'll be doing is just express our thoughts individually, on which way to go. Just to give them an idea of the choice, there's no way. Does that make sense?
Oh, we're about to lose Zoom.
Why?
My batteries are dying. I didn't, I didn't plug. I didn't think I needed to. Does the battery? Jens.
Yeah, okay. I'm always grateful for our planners' insights and guidance. I thought particularly something I, what we reviewed in the staff notes for us. A good presentation was that. That note is standing well. I think she's supportive of the relief request.
Jamie?
I concur with Jens.
Tom?
I think they should pursue whatever the room will see.
I'm only supportive of the relief if we can find a way to close the door behind them for future discussion when other issues arise that are non-environmental. If we feel the language is vague in the ordinance and that, Amy, Amy, can I call you Amy? Okay, and that that's the argument that Amy is going to pursue. Then she's the first one to the party. She gets to claim it. And then we make the correction and then ever after, there's no misunderstanding about what the language of special exception actually means. Now, Tad could say there really is no equivocation and the language is clear. I would defer to his judgment and our town attorneys. But I want a way to close the door behind them so that this doesn't happen again.
I would agree.
I mean, and then I would say, yes, go ahead. But if we don't have a way to close the door, I would say no.
Roger?
I'm going to con with that.
I don't understand that vote.
I go, yes, I go along with that.
Go along with what?
We need to find.
As long as we have a way to protect ourselves, that we're not setting a precedent, everybody's going to come in line to try to claim that they had special exemptions.
That is, that's not, I have to disagree with both of you. I don't think that's an issue for us to vote on in relationship to the ordinance. That's a decision that we make as a board by changing the ordinance. It has absolutely nothing to do with this application.
So perhaps, and Jens, maybe you could help with this too. And maybe Amy should look at the language and get sage advice as to whether or not the language is actually vague and should be reconsidered. But I mean, as it stands right now, I don't think if the board can find a way to stop this from happening again, I don't know how you vote for it. I mean, I want them to be able to get the special exception. It's a heartbreak that their house is really largely done. But I also don't want to leave the door open for others to follow after them. If in fact, it's because our ordinance is vague.
But if we as a planning board do not take that on, then it will not happen. But in this case, it has nothing to do with the applicants. It has nothing to do with them. They are operating under the standard that is in there.
No, but Amy's asking for a special exception and she's claiming that the language is vague. So I would say to Amy, prove it. Show us how it's vague.
The way to prove.
And then we'll move forward.
Susan, the way to prove it is to deny it and let them appeal to the ZBA as to whether or not we reached a proper decision.
Okay, then I'll do that.
So I guess, Susan, my argument in my letter, to address your point if I haven't already, is that I think the term is undefined and so it is vague. And I think that's where I kind of prefaced my presentation with this. It's the board's discretion to really define it. And so it's also the board's, you know, the town's authority to change it down the road, but not in the context of this application. For this application, the board must use what's in front of them in the ordinance.
When I use what is in front of me is the ordinance, I look back at the discussions that were had that were of an environmental nature. And that qualified before the building was ever started. If you had come to us in the beginning and said, we're going to encroach in the shoreline zone because we have to, there's no way we can build otherwise, that would have created a special exception. The fact that you could put that building there and it ended up in the wrong place does not constitute a special exception for me.
Okay, for you beforehand, I was just going to ask, what special unique name? Are we going around? We're going to get different answers.
We are.
Where is that? That's a good question. I guess we have to look into that and know.
Yeah, and I agree. We would all end up with different answers. I'm just telling you, this is my position.
So I guess I want a little bit of clarity. I hear that Jens is supportive, James is supportive, Tom is supportive. Susan, does that change your instinct there?
I did what? I'm sorry, Amy.
As far as supporting, I guess I want to be clear. We're trying to get an idea of moving forward is going to be a process. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing it properly. So did I hear that you are supportive of it or without an ordinance change preempting it, you wouldn't be supportive?
Through the chair, I'm a little worried here that the planning board is prejudicing this decision.
Okay.
I think also would agree with me, like overall line here that I'm worried that. I guess. You're going to have to submit a. You should submit a sum. And I think the board is getting, I think you've already gotten.
Okay, thank you.
Well, support, yeah, well, yeah. But if we go for a vote, what essentially is a vote that we are prejudiced in, in this decision we make in the future. You think so, Jamie? But I think I'm concerned that we need to choose with that. And I would just assume that happens in a single area.
Okay, so you have, you have guidance.
We do.
And you can go in any number of directions. Meanwhile, moving on.
Okay, okay.
And then there's another one.
Tad, the way I read that is eight, six, three, four essentially references the exceptions at eight point six four.
It's, it's one of, yeah. I think if you want to, if you want to reference, if you want to reference, you guys. Which is going to be a four.
Susan and Roger?
Yes.
If we lose you because the batteries on my computer die, you'll know why.
Okay.
But we're fortunate. We have a quorum here in the room.
All right.
Last thing, I promise. Can I, if I get an application 10 days before the next meeting?
Fourteen.
That'll be on.
It's a 14 day submission.
Yeah. In one of the documents, it says up to 10 days before, but I've referenced it a few times.
That would be what, Monday?
The forms are on.
Yep, we can do it. And just put on, we can do that. So we're just hoping to get on those next year. Thank you so much. Thank you very much for all your time.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item. New applications, Monique and Paul Rubatide, subdivision three application. The proposal to subdivide an existing combined residential and commercial facility into three residential units with associated parking and driveway on a 4.4 acre parcel, tax map, 70 lot, 14, located 757 number group in the hour one district. Monique and Paul Rubatide are the owners and applicants. There you are.
First deal is, is we were hoping in time to put a third unit. Excuse me, we have the snazzy pet with one episode on the screen. And we have a plan for a third unit. But the only thing that we, we don't really have an issue with, but we have a right of way over the college property. So we have to do the whole and all of them. They can work. And we are going to throw it all into interesting.
Okay.
This is an easier one, I think, would you honestly?
The first thing we need to do is to schedule a sidewalk to go out there and take a look at the property.
Mr. Rubatide, please submit some more information.
Okay.
And I think that would be a direct attempt with this on sidewalk. Also, I said if you wanted that driveway to be able, able to drive a second.
Call, call actually.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they, the way that you got up to.
That's correct.
That's correct. So.
Yeah.
So you should, this is no longer. This is no longer.
And it's not one of them. But we're working with, I named the front seat, so it's easier. So who'd like?
I think in my staff notes, they have these issues that have to be tall, you know, that has more than enough. Parking spaces and as another area, we have to do a, a. That was actually, this is a substantial subdivision. This is a minor subdivision. It has to be a minor subdivision because as soon as, the problem is adding just a third unit. Organizing, first of all, makes it a multi-pan, makes it conditionally use in a subdivision. The thing is that the ordinance, I said, as I said in my notes, it has a single family home and accessory apartment in this building. And you must say I had a third one, it was one, it was. And it's converting that to a residence. The issue is that is a accessory apartment stops, ceases being accessory when it's out of a single family home. So we have to consider that a third unit. That's actually the first two units, a single family home and accessory block. Now the additional third unit makes it a three unit project, which is a minor subdivision. And so that's why we have to have a subdivision process. And it is minor, so it doesn't have to go through a criminal act. And then finally, yeah, and it's a pre-application process and we brought to a sidewalk to determine what submission or what is going to be an additional.
So this, the 25th?
Yes.
Thursday for the sidewalk?
Yeah. Six thirty, six, thank you.
We might want to look at that. Do we need to do a sidewalk at the wellness center? Okay, so we've got, we're going to end up with two sidewalks that day if we do them at.
Is this the 25th?
Yes. I'm not sure we get that.
This one at six thirty where it's closed by.
Okay.
If we end it up back here. Yeah.
And do the other. Okay.
Golden, anyway. Rich will be closed.
But yeah, I do think it would be better to do this one at six thirty.
I guess this will be a great.
Yes.
Right, so there's no real, no real other improvements are necessary.
Somebody want to make a motion for me?
I'm going, we have a sidewalk at six thirty PM on June 25th.
Motion's been made, the second and first sidewalk, June 25th at six thirty. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Good on I. It is unanimous. We will see you in two weeks at six thirty.
Oh, where is it?
Right down here. You know where Snazzy Pet is? Yeah, he's got Snazzy Pet. Okay, next item, the Wellness Center, under recycling review determination of completeness. Their proposal to expand an existing parking lot, serving two commercial structures by approximately 5,100 square feet. And 1,009 and 1,005, 4.18 acre parcel, tax map, 43 lots, 52 and 52A in the DB1 and RP districts. Elizabeth Boucher is, is it Boucher or Voucher?
Boucher.
Boucher.
There you go.
Well, I know people in St. Boucher and I know other people that are going Voucher. Or Bush. Yeah, I had a friend, John Bush.
Yep.
Yep. At any rate, Elizabeth is the owner applicant.
So, you know, we remodeled the farmhouse next door. The wellness center and the first floor in the front portion of the building is commercial. It's an 810 square foot office space, so we're looking to expand the parking lot to accommodate the renter there.
I'm Tom Shonin. I'm here as an agent for Mr. Mr. Boucher. And Tom Shonin. And we brought those pictures because we thought it made it clear that the existing parking lot is in somewhere that depreciated condition. So they, they want to just repave that existing parking lot.
But part of this parking lot was never painted, start with. We have pictures going back to 2016, it was brass. We have pictures going back to two thousand sixteen, show it was grass.
Correct. We're looking at just the existing, the existing, the existing parking lot we're repaving. But if you look at the pictures that show the three car garage.
Yeah.
You can see where that's the driveway to the, to the house. And if someone wants to go from the parking lot and drive into their garage, they just drive over dirt right now.
Right.
That has not been paved before. And so that portion of repaving, under other parts of the statue, needs to be connected to paving per adjacent property. So they just want to, you know, as part of the repaving, there is an expansion. And that expansion part is majority of that driveway is surplus three kilos.
So there'd be some reconfiguration of where the parking goes. Or, you know, the, or access.
Yes. To allow people to, you know, they got to back out of that garage, turn around. The parking lot is pretty full on, on any given day, so, and the lines are all, I mean, you can
Well, that's kind of intentional because I was waiting to get this going before I went ahead.
Yeah. It's kind of
Clean the whole area, repaint it and get it all in place so we can line it up. So that when people pull in from the road, they can see exactly where they need to park.
So, so there's yellow line is the proposed
Tom, one sec.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, you're absolutely, that's, yep.
So yeah, we'd be adding two spaces up there, we want, so there'll be a total of four.
Yep.
That yellow line is rough. The applicant did submit a formal plan that shows it with survey specimens.
So the drawing is definitely
Yeah.
You have a draw.
Can you pass those? Do you want to see those? They have them. Oh, okay. You have the form, he has the form.
No.
I sent them to you.
Well, I didn't print them. They came through.
Yeah.
You didn't print the, the aerial photos, but they're
You saw my aerial photo, right?
So
He needs one.
But you're going to have to actually Yeah. I have. Again, it's, I can't print it either, but that's okay. Surprisingly enough, I could print the photos.
This, this is your would you name us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's an expansion of our class. Yeah. Which, which is fine, but it's a sensitive area.
It's in the shoreline.
Shoreline zone, so I did have to work on that.
Well, there is a, a, what is it, Tom? It's Article four section. You're right that we're dealing with the setback to the Kenmore River there. And generally that would be a two or fifty foot setback, but under eight, six, four exceptions to setbacks and dimensional standards. It's under eight, six, four subsection two, it says relaxed setbacks in resource protection district. So it says structures, roads and parking spaces are specifically allowed in the resource protection district shall be set back just one hundred feet. So I'm looking at, you probably pulled it up. And then if we also look down to subsection four, that deals with driveways within that shoreline zone. And we would classify, you know, some of the expansion as driveway because it's leading, you know, it's a driveway to that, that house. So we would be working through that portion of the, of the ordinance. Because I think it's relative.
Chair?
Yeah.
There's right, Tom's right.
Please do.
Now it's right, it's on a setback, but you're not in the resource protection. The shoreline
Okay.
Because the resource protection district in the Kenmore River is the flood, which is that area behind the building. The flood was not as the actual, it's just under the flood. Which is one of the reasons why that's what made, but an expansion because we encourage her to put parking lot back for that flood. This shoreline overlay is getting the setback from the head of the river, a few small hundred. The same thing, just the technical, technical area there.
So there's not, there's not, we, we don't have to worry about a distinction between the RP and the ST.
On the, I don't think so, no. Unless I, the flood was not included in the plan, unless that flood was going into the, or that arc. I don't know, nobody would think we, we would want to know where that flood was. And I think, I think
I, yeah, we have this, we have this You have that one in the package.
It is in the package?
It was in the package that we submitted with the same package.
And can we, can we take a look out to the there is, the fact of the building, it's in the relaxed, the back. The building itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the building is not four years. It is not, it's something that is in the shore, it's within the, yes, my, of the, of the shore. So which is why Jim Nagle, he gave a rule of thumb, was able to allow for the, for the rehabilitation. And actually, the extension helped with him that that five hundred foot setback. As long as it didn't increase the terms of area and in terms of distance to the river.
But you're right, Jens, I think your point was the house is closer to the Kenmore River than the proposed driveway pavement. Right now, it's just, we're driving.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep.
So, so the question would be, is that, is that lot, the parking space number eighteen absolutely necessary?
No.
In other words, as far as they order it, so he wouldn't need it.
That's, that's, yeah, essentially my question.
And you commented to me this last time you did, there's no roof parking on the north side of the building. No, there is a driveway.
A driveway.
Yeah.
That driveway, the other side of driveway is the problem.
Right on.
Yeah.
We were originally going to put a parking lot behind.
Yeah.
But then we heard that the farmhouse was coming up for sale, so
Okay.
We just started to buy on that and we had that, we had that flood. So okay, and you see that I just pushed so products
Okay, well, I think the first thing we need to do is go out there at six o'clock. I just need a motion.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
On the twenty fifth, Rich?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I wanted to guess five forty five. Do I have plenty of time?
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. So we have a motion. I need a second for five forty five.
I'll second it.
Jens, Jens made the motion. Susan seconds it for five forty five on the twenty fifth at the Wellness Center. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Tom? Roger?
Gone, aye.
Yep, it's unanimous. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Since you scheduled the sidewalk, do you, do you still, is this the appropriate venue to make a determination of completeness of application?